Good afternoon and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, November 18th, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thanks to the alumni from our Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board for the video. We'll move on to the adoption of our previous council meeting minutes under item 3.1. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, November 4th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Count, next is the adoption of the agenda. Get a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented. Counselor Thiessen.
Sure, let's double dip. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that takes us to our open delegation opportunity at every regular city council meeting, and we've been going for four months now, five months now with a new system where we have an open delegation portion in our afternoon session of council. And if there are scheduled delegations, we would return for an evening session. I don't see anybody charging the stage to come up front to our open delegation session today, and it's okay, maybe everybody's a little bit shy. And I note that we don't have anybody planned for our afternoon session or evening session, so we likely won't come back. But I guess I would just would remind the community that this opportunity does exist as one of the many different ways to interact with city council, right here in council chambers, along with all the other ways that you can get a hold of council members. Since there's nobody coming forward, we'll close the delegation portion and move through no items of unfinished business, no items under reports, and it takes us to committee business, starting with item 8.1, Council Committee of the Whole from November 5th. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the council committee in whole meeting held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. It's just a question to administration in regards to this council committee of the whole. There was a motion for some direction for the affordable housing strategy to come back to council. When do you suppose that will hit our next council?
So is that a question for Director Manuel with respect to when council would see the amended affordable housing strategy?
It's certainly something that I have read working on, but I would expect sometime early January. We still need some opportunity to connect with the stakeholders in a more meaningful manner, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Thanks for that update. Thanks for the question, Counselor Thiessen. We'll move on to the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee from November 12th. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, as presented.
Counselor Bressi, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, please vote to adopt them. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi, anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, there's gonna be no business arising, but a few things worth noting is from our Director Service Area update. Inspection Services got an additional building permit fee for the hospital, so it was good to know, A, that work's happening on the hospital, now we know for sure it is, but also in light of the provincial government deciding to cut the amount of property tax they'll pay in half. It was nice to get one source, one last source of revenue from that before they stopped paying us for the very expensive services we offered to that building. Something else worth noting is transportation crews, as you know, they're out removing snow, residential clearing has begun. By the time I'm giving you this update, I suspect those are probably about halfway done. And then the last thing worth talking about at the committee is we received a request from International Paper asking if we wanted to point somebody to the environmental advisory committee that they have, and we directed administration to pull up with that and take steps as necessary, figure out should be a politician or should be a staff member potentially on there, is there value there? So that's in administration's hands now.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. We'll move on to Community Services Committee. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. I would move that council accept the minutes of the Community Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 12th, 2019.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Not seeing anyone ring in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Friesen, anything you want to highlight?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. So I'll start off with one. We had a little shutdown at East Link for a little bit with some water quality concern, and the aquatic staff and AHS worked wonderfully well together, and the water quality was stabilized. All pools are back up and operating at provincial pool standards, so it was well managed by East Link, and that does, is something that happens just from time to time with pools. Rinks, excuse me, community rinks are open, they've started to flood. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, about 20 neighborhood rink applications have been received so far. The deadline is December 15th, so if you want your rink flooded in your neighborhood, make sure to submit an application for that. And Community Connections is coming out pretty quick, which is always exciting to find out what you want to put your kids in for the, or your kids and yourselves in for the winter. We've also got the, it's coming to an end now, the Sasquatch exhibit at the museum downstairs at Centre 2000 has been running for a little bit, but it's closing January 5th, so you haven't, if you haven't had a chance to make that one yet, make sure that you do get to it. And Vegas Night, everyone was gearing up for Vegas Night, which happened on Friday night. It's always the busiest, most exciting time of the year in downtown shopping, in my opinion, and this Friday was no exception. It was a great busy evening and relatively warm for it, which was a nice change. That's it for me, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Item 8.4, the Corporate Services Committee meeting, I think that was Counselor Minhas' set of minutes. Counselor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the Cooperative Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhas, you do have some.
Yes, I got a couple of recommendations. I move the council receive the 2018 census and population analyzed for the information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. Adopt the 2018 census results and population analysis. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Minhas.
Yes, sir. I'll move the council receive this information and, oh, what the hell? Second, direct the mayor to commitment to this information to our local MLA.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Just speaking from the committee perspective, we did receive a report from administration looking at the impact on the city of Grand Prairie from the provincial budget and the broader impact on the community. I think the intent of the committee was that we should share that with our local MLAs so they're aware of those specific impacts as we analyze them and to ensure that they're fully aware of those. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhas, anything else you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
Yes, there's a couple of things. We talked about it there. Assessment and taxation accessory are working on the valuation for the next year assessment, and we are looking at some of the smaller resident permits that we were taken out of this year. Adoption is making arrangement to, for the tax sale for the end of this month. The amount of property on the tax sale have gone from 79 to 7. Each of seven properties owner have been contacted. Then Cooperative Facility Management, the 2019 Facility Renewal Project are being reviewed with all the building managers along the identifying, the planning for 2020 project administration is delivering, sorry, developing a plan for insurance risk management assessment of facility electrical distribution system inspection review as facility audit report that have been completed to the date underway. And information on technology service, the business license went to live on City View platform. Adoption procure a Dell tablet for the COA of View Lodge. The security awareness month escape room has closed more than 150 staff. But participation is preparing workstation and printer for the government deal. So that's about it, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. And that'll take us to seat point five, the Protective and Social Services Committee. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes from the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. Any discussion or debate on those minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Looking for one more, I think, council? Let's make sure your vote's stuck, thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Palat, anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, there was a few things, Mayor Given. It was a lighter meeting, but there was some, some good updates, something that's kind of exciting. Administration did let us know that our FCSS will be receiving an award that'll be presented at the FCSS conference here later this month, and the Community Forum on Opioids will be holding awareness on November 20th, so in a couple nights here at 6:30, and it'll be moderated by Mr. Thiessen sitting to my left here. So hopefully, if you have a chance, you can stop down to that, some members of the committee will show up for that. Enforcement Services also did let us know that their focus this month's on advanced vehicles in preparation for the winter season. We had an item come forward about criminal record checks, so interesting, they brought some data that there were 50, 522 requests total, and 682 of these were from outside the city limits. Also, Mayor Given put himself to work a little bit on this one. He come forward and discussed that he'd like to have the city look into improving traffic safety enforcement efficiencies and customer services. So we did direct administration to bring back reports on the opportunities to improve traffic enforcement efficiencies and customer service.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. To be really clear, I put everybody else to work on that one with, with the committee's support. I'm not the one doing the report, so we know where all the hard work actually gets done in this organization. Thanks, Counselor Palat. That'll take us to item 8.6, and before we launch into that, the minutes from our Council Committee of the Whole meeting and budget deliberations. Counselor Blackburn had wished to call in and vote on item 8.6.1, so I'll just look up to make sure that we have Counselor Blackburn there. We'll first have a motion for the minutes of that meeting, which Counselor Blackburn doesn't need to vote on, but on the 8.6.1 budget deliberations, we'll have two motions arising, and I think Counselor Blackburn wanted to join in. Counselor Blackburn, are you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, so Counselor Blackburn, we're first gonna do the minutes, you don't need to vote on that, but when we do the two motions arising with respect to budget, I will make sure to come to you as well, okay?
Thank you.
So can I first have a motion to adopt the minutes from our Committee of the Whole meetings? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held Wednesday, November 13th, to Friday, November 15th, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, it's obviously fresh in everybody's mind since it feels like we were just in these seats. I'll call for the vote on that set of minutes. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to the motions arising with respect to the budget. Can I have a motion first for the 2020 operating budget? Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council has reviewed and approves the 2020 operating and 2020 capital budgets.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Open for discussion debate on the 2020 operating and capital budgets? Any discussion or debate from my council members here in the room? We've probably all had our discussion debate last week, and so maybe I'll go to Counselor Blackburn, who I know was keenly watching the council webcast and in contact with council members during. Counselor Blackburn, did you have any comment on the 2020 operating and capital budgets?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I certainly would like to speak in favor of the motion. I'm very happy to be able to watch the livestream of the three days of proceedings. I think I only missed a couple of hours through the entire time. I'm quite happy to see that we have a relatively low increase in the tax revenue requirement for, for the city for this coming year. I was a little disappointed that we didn't stick with the 1.51% because it would have provided a little bit more money for our reserves, but I'm very happy to see a low rate for our taxpayers, and, and so I look forward to seeing this pass.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion debate, so I'll call for the vote first from our in-chambers council members, and then I'll come to Counselor Blackburn for his vote. Council members in chambers, please vote. And Counselor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. And that adds up to nine for the first time in a little while. It's good to have, have us back up to nine. Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. We also have our second motion arising with respect to the longer term view of the budget, and I think that's Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, I move that council adopt the 2021 through 2023 operating financial plan and the 2021 through 2024 capital plan pending annual review by council.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. As a requirement to the Municipal Government Act, municipalities are required to pass multi-year budgets, and so this is a motion to give that effect while still acknowledging the fact that each year council does, council and administration do actually review the budget in detail. Is there any discussion or debate from council members in chambers on those future years of the budget? Seeing none, Counselor Blackburn, do you have any discussion or debate on those future years of the budget?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would be in favor of this as well, and I'm pleased to know that we have the opportunity to review each of these years as they come up. I'm sure there are a couple of things that we will change our mind over as time goes on, but in the meantime, it's a perfectly good plan. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. So once again with that, I will call for the vote of the council members in chambers. Please vote. And Counselor Blackburn, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously with nine votes. Counselor Blackburn, thanks very much for calling in today to add your voice to the endorsement so we have a clean sweep, a unanimous endorsement of the city council budget for 2020. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, that concludes all of our committee business. We have no items of correspondence today, nor delegation business, nor notice of motion that I know of. And that would take us to council member reports, and we'll start first with community futures of Grand Prairie and region.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I attended my first community futures meeting in the last couple of years, and it was an organization meeting. We introduced Warren Toz as the chair of the new board, as well as Chris Sapola as vice chair, and got one announcement, Chris Turmyle, he limited out on his years of being on the board, and last Thursday was his last meeting. So he's brought a lot of expertise and good conversation over the years, and other than that, there's not much I can say. It was kind of talking over some previous business and getting us back into the mood of dealing with the provincial and the governing bodies that we get our money from. So with that, that's my report.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And Counselor Friesen, I believe you had Grand Prairie Library Board.
Thank you, I did have. So this was likewise my first, my first day with the library board, having had a quick orientation a few mornings before with Counselor Bressi, who is my, my second when I'm not available. I'm delighted to be on this board and very pleased to announce that we reviewed the strategy for the board for the upcoming years. We anticipate that it'll be approved at the next board meeting, but what's very exciting about that is that we'll be one of the first two libraries in Alberta to actually have a strategy. So that's pretty exciting. And this didn't happen at the board meeting, but I do want to mention it here. On my way here, I stopped off at the library, and there was a very exciting announcement made that through RBC's generous donation of $15,000 grant via the Community Foundation, the Grand Prairie Public Library has been selected as the winner of the, of the grant, and their project is called Project Full Stop, and it fits very well. It's regarding individuals who are limited in the activities that they can do or in going to school, that sort of thing, because they can't always access menstrual products. So the library will become a supplier for no charge to those individuals who need to get some, some menstrual products. So that's pretty exciting. We, we certainly know of this in, in third world and other emerging countries, but to have that be recognized and addressed as a concern in our own city is also important. So it was wonderful that the library submitted that application and that it was accepted. And as, as a place where individuals who are street engaged or who have social or financial challenges are already comfortable coming, this to add to the, this suite of welcoming services and helpful services that the library provides is absolutely wonderful. So Project Full Stop will be available at the Grand Prairie Public Library. Thank you, RBC and Community Foundation.
Thanks very much for the update, Counselor Friesen. So with that, I don't think there are any more reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions, and so we'll go to council member roundtable. We'll start with Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a couple to announce, attend, had the opportunity to attend the Charles Spencer High School Remembrance Day Ceremony on behalf of council. I know that many other council members were attending other ceremonies, and it was great we, we were able to fill the full request of, full gamut of requests for the various Remembrance Day ceremonies across the community, and I wanted to say kudos to Charles Spencer. Hadn't been to one of their Remembrance Day ceremonies before, and they did a great job. It was, it was a very special ceremony, so thank you to them for that. And also had the opportunity to attend a check presentation with many other counselors and from, from the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie, who presented Money for Habitat for Humanity and some housing needs as well. They've recently supported the city in a, in a warming shelter, and so thank you to the Grand Prairie Rotary Club for their generous contribution in our community. And that's it for now. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole.
I didn't realize I was gonna be next, but I'm good. So on Thursday, the 7th, I attended the question and answer period by St. Gerard's School at City Hall, learning about local politics. I was joined with of course Mayor Given, Chris Thiessen, and Dylan Bressi, and it was a couple of hours almost filled up with good questions and great answers. Also, I attended the National Indigenous Ceremony on November 8th for Veterans Day at the Memorial Gardens. Once again, it was a quaint ceremony, was a very, let's just say, it rained that morning and the roads were quite slick, so there was a number of guests that were supposed to be coming in from out of town that just couldn't make it. The roads were treacherous, but once again, it was a very, very good, very good turnout as the ceremony was touching for a number of members of the Legion as well as the Métis and the other Aboriginal groups that are, are in from around the area. And once again, we couldn't attend all the events on that particular day, but there was enough counselors here and enough events that we all shared some, some of the responsibility of attending. And just one more item that I'd like to bring up as well, I want to just thank the administration very much and all the staff that worked through the budget. It was about as streamlined as you could possibly get, but yet allowed a lot of discussion. It was three days, and there was days where it's pretty stressful making decisions on the next year of how the city's gonna operate, but I know this guy didn't get much sleep at night, even though we got out of here at 5:00. There was a lot of concerns and questions to myself, but once again, kudos to the corporate team, kudos to the staff, and thank you very much, fellow councilor members.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. A couple things I'll highlight is, one, I had fun going with Counselor Friesen to do board orientation at the library, and something I want to highlight there is if you haven't been in lately, you need to check out, they have the coolest book ever. It's over 100 pounds, it's about this big. It's called Equation of Time. It's photos by a photographer named Peter Lick. He's just, just incredible photos from all across the world, and you get to scroll through pages again like this big, all looking out at the, with all the natural sunlight coming in from the Mama Week concourse. It's a place that is well worth going and spending a good chunk of time scroll, time scrolling through, and so if you haven't seen it yet, you need to go check that out. The one other highlight that I'll note is this week I got to go to Inclusion Grand Prairie is a organization that does important work in our community, and I got to go to, I got to go to a parent night, just a chance for parents with kids who have various challenges getting to connect with each other. It was great getting to hear more about what inclusion does here in Grand Prairie and getting to hear some of their dreams about having a resource center for parents so that they've got a place that they can go to get good information and good resources, and so it was a highlight for me.
That's Counselor Bressi. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I had a few highlights actually of the week. One of them was November 12th, I met many members of city council, helped the Métis community raise their flag here at City Hall. I believe this was the eighth year in a row, which means I've been to every single one of them so far, so I feel pretty good about myself in that one. One is a community member, the other seven is a counselor, so I feel pretty honored that we would do that for our Métis community. A special thanks to Kevin O'Toole for helping with the flag and making sure that that sucker went up, because I didn't have the experience, I would have clipped my finger or something. Also took part in several Remembrance Day ceremonies. I had the opportunity, especially for the big one, to lay a wreath on behalf of city council with counselors Eunice Friesen and Wade Palat. We did it as a team, and it was great to be able to do that and show off my new haircut to a full house. It was a little intimidating, so thanks, guys, for walking by my side. Finally, I'd just like to do a big shout out and thank you to Counselor Minhas. This past Sunday, just yesterday, we celebrated the 550th birthday of the Guru Nanak Devji. If you're not aware of who that is, he's the founder of the Sikh religion. It has a special place in my heart. When I was a younger child, a Sikh master actually helped me get in tune with my gifts and lead me on the path that I'm at today, so it was an honor to be able to give greetings on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie. This is hosted by the Gursi Commissionaries Society and the Sikh temple, and Counselor Minhas was there to make sure that I was well-prepared in my Punjabi to greet the masses. So in saying that, I'll just say, Hari Guru Jika Kasa, Hari Guru Jika Kasa. greet the masses. So in saying that, I'll just say, Hare Guru Jika Kalsa, Hare Guru Jiki Fateh. So many happy blessings surround us all as we join together to remember the beloved Guru Nanak Devji and the beginning of Sikhism. Thank you very much, Counselor Minhas.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Couple, one fun highlight for me that hasn't been mentioned yet was the Festival of Trees this past Saturday. I believe Counselor O'Toole, Clayton, Minhas, and Mayor Given were there as well. It was a great night. I don't know if the funding went as hoped for them. I think they still had a good year, but I think it was down a little bit. It felt like, I don't know the final numbers. But, and I also want to echo Counselor O'Toole's comments to our administration and all the team behind the administration for budget this year. Tough three days, but it was, it was good to get through it. I think it was, it was a good process here, and I really appreciate all the work that was put in by administration for that one. And so after budget, I thought I would have a fun night, and Chris, Director Manuel set up a ride-along. So I got to go do a ride-along with the RCMP. It was, it was nice to hear from the members I talked to. They were quite happy about the switch with alerts, so we'll see how that works out over time. But it was nice to hear from the members that I talked to that they were quite happy with the changes. Was, wasn't an exciting night. We did check some abandoned cars and some parking lots. I thought I was going to have a super bad moment, but that didn't come. But I can understand that was we're checking for abandoned vehicles, what we were doing. We did run a lot of license plates, and we did find a couple. But it was a pretty quiet evening overall, so that's probably a good thing. But it was a really good opportunity, so I appreciate that Director Manuel set that up because it allowed me to ask a lot of questions that I probably wouldn't have been able to ask. And I want to throw a thank you out to watch Commander Shiloh Fragamani, if I'm saying her last name right. She was great. I warned her off the start. She should probably have a safe word if I was asking too many questions, and she could either taser me or give me something. But at three o'clock when she dropped me off, she said it was okay. So it was a fun night, and it was something that I'd recommend if you haven't had a chance to do, if it's something that's available to do, that it's worthwhile doing.
Thanks, Counselor Plot. Counselor Friesen.
I'm still laughing at the idea of you getting tasered. What an exciting couple of weeks I had with, of course, the Remembrance Day celebrations. I had the opportunity, I read an open letter to Canadians from a currently serving U.S. military member, and he spent Remembrance Day in Canada and had no idea how much we appreciated. He says he doesn't see that in the U.S., you know, as, as much as they are for country and, and appreciate their servicemen and women. He does not see that level of support, the poppy wearing and everyone showing up to, to thank and honor our, our service members. So that was really nice to hear that that's so important in Canada. And I started out the day with breakfast at Trinity Lutheran and then went to the Legion event at Revolution Place. And there were a couple of more events after that. It's just a really special day in Canada. And I also want to mention the Northern Spirit Light Show Gala. Counselors O'Toole and Thiessen were there with me. And I just want to thank the Peace Draft Horse Association for organizing that beautiful Northern Lights event. We, we sure appreciate it all year out, or all, all season out at Evergreen Park. It's beautiful, and it's something that when my kids come home, we always still need to go to. So that was great to see. And I also attended a couple of screenings this week. The first was back on November sixth, the AHS Patient and Family Centered Care Film Festival. There were a handful of short films that were local stories of individuals who've been impacted by the family-centered care that AHS is very proud to provide for our, our peace region folks. And then the other one was the Grand Prairie Hospice Palliative Care Society film screening of Getting Grace. This is a film where it is a Hollywood film, and we brought in the, the director and two major stars of the film for a Q and A after. And a lot of it was, was really centered around what, what it's like and what, what it means to be, to be terminally ill. And there was one very touching moment when a young woman, a young girl who had just completed her cancer treatment had her photo taken with the star of the film, who is in the film, a young girl who is undergoing cancer treatment. And that brought a tear to many eyes. So kudos to Grand Prairie Hospice Palliative Care Society on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Given. First of all, I would appreciate very much for our budget Harasious team, how good budget they presented, how much work they had. I really admire them that the way they did it and proved it, and people are, comments are good so far, but somebody's going to be negative soon, but whatever. So you guys did a great job. And then went to Kavanaugh, me into the November eighth Army Navy Dean Chis Remembrance Day. And then after that, I think I had, I went to my granddaughter's first birthday in Edmonton because it was done by the mom-sized parents. It was lots of fun there and good to meet a lot of old people. And then quite a bit busy with our five hundred and fifty year first Guru's Birthday Anniversary. And we got their Chris Kavanaugh Tool and myself. And then Tracy, she was Tracy Alert, and our MP, Chris Burkington, they show up. It was pretty good on the last day on Sunday. And then we did a donation to Rotary Club Food and also the Shelter of the Women Place. So that kept me busy. And then also did on Thursday night, Rotary presented eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the foundation, to the hospital, and nine hundred and fifty to, I have to man, to build the houses for the affordable houses thing. That was a very great thing to them. And Mayor was a great job. He done it that night to speech and everything saying appreciation. So that's all I have done.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. So in addition to the items that were mentioned by other council members, I would just highlight a couple. I want to say thanks very much to the Army, Navy, Air Force veterans that was mentioned. But I, I really enjoy going to the outdoor ceremony, and I really appreciate the fact that we have both an outdoor and an indoor ceremony. It makes it so that so many more people can participate. Many of our seniors can't attend out at the Santa Taff Outdoors. And then there are those traditionalists who like to be outdoors and maybe feel like they're sacrificing just a tiny, teeny, you know, tiny little bit. But I appreciate the fact that Grand Prairie has two alternatives for our community. And thanks so much to the Legion and everybody who organizes the indoor one and the Anna Vets who organize the outdoor one. I wanted to report to council. I attended on Saturday, the sixteenth, the annual Lloyd Head Memorial Hockey Tournament. This is the forty-second time the tournament's been held here in Grand Prairie. Matt Keeler, the head coach of the Grand Prairie Storm, was the emcee for the sort of official ceremonies. The tournament brings together, I believe they are bantams. Oh, I always get that confused. But young hockey players from across, across Alberta, sometimes from the Territories into British Columbia. So usually it's about an eighteen tournament that's been going on for forty-two years now to recognize a member of our community who is deep into the hockey community. Matt from the Storm observed that he was asking around his dressing room of Storm players, and there were five Storm players who were alumni of the Lloyd Head Tournament, only three of which were Grand Prairie kids. The other two were kids who were from other communities who were first experiencing Grand Prairie, was at the Lloyd Head Tournament in their younger years, and then they eventually came back as members of the Grand Prairie Storm. So that was great to see. And I also want to add my congratulations to the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie. The two donations this week to different community organizations, as we heard, Habitat for Humanity and the Hospital Foundation, when combined with their recent donation in support of day shelter services, establishing day shelter space here in Grand Prairie, brings their total to nearly three million dollars that they've put back into our community. And it should be a reminder to all of us that these organizations in our community who are selling tickets for stuff, that stuff, those tickets that you buy, it's not just the prizes. It has a really big impact on a lot of people's lives. And so the Grand Prairie Rotary Club's Dream Home Lottery is the lottery that has been able to support those massive contributions back into our community. And so if you've ever bought a Dream Home ticket, you should give yourself a little pat on the back, whether or not you won. If you won, then maybe you should give the Rotary Club a pat on the back. But it's a good reminder that we have these great charitable organizations in our community who are working hard, not for their own benefit, but for the benefit of their community. And three million dollars back into these causes is, is a pretty big milestone, and the Rotary Club should be congratulated for that. So I just wanted to take that time to acknowledge them. And with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.